Hey, good evening all. It is seven o'clock. This is our Committee of the Pole meeting, April eighth. For those in attendance, there's no one in attendance here, but for those online, please be aware that the meetings are recorded for public viewing and placed on a publicly available website. We will do our territorial acknowledgement that we have the, that we're grateful to live, work, and play on the Unseated First Nations Plan that we have attached in a territory. Get at item three, approval of the agenda.
Okay, can we do the agenda?
I do an add. Thank you, Councilor Janice, and I'll count that as a second, and then what would you like to add?
I didn't know how that would work.
Yep.
Okay, just do a quick discussion on the resolution, Little Espinoza camp sites.
Perfect. So we'll put that under 10A, Forestry Campsites and Access. And then I believe we also have another addendum, and that will be, oh, sorry, that was under 10A, New Business.
Great.
That's Louis's addition. And then we have another addendum, business arising from the minute, so it'll be 5A, and it'll be a Parks conversation, the Parks Committee conversation. So then, anything else from anybody? Hearing none, as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So there actually is no minutes to adopt. We will move right into 5A, and I will turn that over to the CAO for some information on a discussion about Parks Committee.
Mayor Colborne, so as we know, Council put forward a resolution to form a select committee to oversee the development of the parks and campground trails in Zavallis. We put out an ad with a closing date, I do believe it was March 28. And only having received one applicant by March 28, we extended for another week to Friday of last week. And we still haven't received any further applications. So just bringing it forward to Council, whether you would like to continue to extend to to see if we can garner more interest for the committee, or if this is a committee that we should do in-house, and perhaps just invite the one interested person to those meetings.
I'll leave that to Council for questions or comments.
Mayor Copeland. How many do we have already on that committee for the parks?
So it was just myself and yourself as the two council representatives, and then we were meant to have three more. If you could give us a rundown of who those were to be?
So somebody from the general public, like a resident, a business owner, and a First Nations representative.
So that we're meant to be five on the committee in total, and we've only had one interested party come?
What a classification of that.
Resident.
Thank you.
Alternatives?
Repeal the, or rescind the resolution, and Council take that on in regular committee of the whole. And if this individual is interested, you could invite them as a delegate to those meetings to have discussions where the parks is going.
Back to Council.
Mayor Copeland, well done. There should be some sort of priority on here. I know we can't, it's lobby divorce, so to speak, but we have a priority here because we're in the hat of the tourism. It's hard to say, come and see our trails when they're not functional yet. We really should have some priority on this committee if we can, and spending sooner than later.
I think the possible way to expedite that would be to take care of it in-house and then invite the interested party as to not alienate them, or they have shown interest, so whoever that may be, and then maybe just have a standing item on a committee of the whole agenda. What, say you, how does that work for staff? Would that be appropriate?
Thank you, Mayor Colborne, absolutely. And given that we were committed to providing administrative support to this committee anyway, even if Council could garner enough interest to hold more frequent meetings, we can make staff available for those meetings. So if you wanted to have more than once a month, which is what our current Committee of the Whole status is at, and go to two, three, four times a month, we could likely make that work.
All right, so back to Council. The options seem to be to, I mean, we could extend it. That again extends the time, so that's one option. We could bring it in-house. So option two would be to bring it in-house and invite that interested party to come in. So those are kind of our options right now, or just do it as our regular business of this committee. So those are kind of three.
I think doing it in-house with and inviting the person that was interested.
Okay, so there's one vote for that.
What about the Regional District School Board meeting that's coming up, is it not?
This, there is a, there is a school board meeting that's coming. That's exterior of all of this. That doesn't count for parks or?
But would that be a good place to solicit some help? For the school board? It depends. It's a school, but you didn't have?
It could for the, you know, yeah, it absolutely could be somewhere that we could promote that. I would hope that we as councilors had been promoting it all along to everybody we've kind of been talked to. It's kind of what my experience has been. It's interesting, though, with, so with the people that live here that work at the school, absolutely. Quite often, though, the teachers don't stay during the summer times, or that's their holiday, so then you would miss those, they would be missing those meetings, unless there was a Zoom provision. We can work around anything. So if we'd like to extend it, then that's fine. If we want to move forward and expedite it, then we should probably do it here. Those are our. So you've got one vote for bringing it in-house, Councilor Janice?
The only way it's going to gain traction is if we take care of it. So if you're serious about what you're saying, I think that needs to be taken care of in-house and need to start the movie.
Agreed.
Okay, so that's three agreement there. Councilor Deck?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. It seems to me that all the volunteers in Zavallis are sitting at that table with you. So I think we bring it in-house.
Okay, so then the next question would be, do we ask the interested party to come and attend?
For sure.
Okay, perfect. So then, not that we, do we need a motion right now to rescind, or will we do that at the regular meeting?
We'll do that.
So staff will take it under advisement that we will rescind that motion to have a Parks Committee?
It would be good in this Committee of the Whole that that recommendation be pushed forward to the next meeting.
Okay, so I'll put a recommendation forward that we recommend to the regular meeting that we rescind the resolution to put it forward a Parks Committee, that we bring that Parks Committee business into the Council table, and that we invite the interested party to attend. That's a second from Councilor Lewis. What's that? Oh, thank you, Councilor Deck. Already, you have all of that, CAO?
One's.
I said that quite fast. I should slow down, I know, but.
A recommendation that the Parks Committee resolution be rescinded, and the interested resident be invited to attend Council Committee meetings.
Perfect, on that subject matter. Yep. Thank you for paraphrasing that. That was a little long-winded. Okay, so I will call the question. All in favor? Any opposed? That focus is carried. Thank you so much for bringing that and coming to forward to us. No delegations or petitions this evening. We'll respond it on the agenda for reports. So we've got in front of us the 2025 operating budget. There's a staff report and a proposal. I did want to, before we hear from the staff responsible, which I'm assuming is Deputy Financial Clerk Janice, that I had put an email out earlier to, I think that was the beginning of this week, or maybe the end of last week, to get a sense of what the last few years had been like in our operating budget. And that was to see if there were any trends moving forward, if there was anything that was trending in those. I came and discussed with Deputy CEO or Deputy Financial Clerk Janice today, or yesterday, and realized in 28, 2016, there was a bridge built. We had an extra $2 million in our budget. In 2018, we had a forest fire that swayed all of the data. In 2020, there was COVID, that again swayed all the debt. There was no sense, so that's why nothing ever came of it. That's why that information wasn't provided. I told her just to not work on that because there was no sense. There were no trends. This place is sometimes not your usual cooking. So I just wanted to put that out there for Council, so they knew. I'm turning it over to staff for the report.
Thank you, Mayor Colborne. Deputy Janice or Finance Manager Claudia Frost can speak to any questions that Council may have.
Is there anything that either of you wanted to add before we get to questions or comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to highlight that the proposed operating budget that you see before you today will be put together as part of the five-year financial plan bylaw, which is slated for first, second, and third reading at the April 22 regular meeting, as it must be adopted before the May 15 deadline by legislation. So this evening, we're looking for any final feedback from Council to be included in that draft bylaw to be considered at the April 22 regular. Thank you.
Thank you for that. So we'll turn that over to Council. Questions, comments? Not seeing any hands flailing widely, so I would suggest then maybe that somebody makes the recommendation that Council has reviewed the proposed and recommends no changes.
Recommendation that Council reviewed the proposed 2025 budget as presented. So this is the one you want?
Yeah, but we should put that has reviewed, because this is what we have done. We, the Council has reviewed by going through this exercise today and reading our agendas, and that we have not provided any final direction, that we've had no additional.
They recommend that Council has reviewed the proposed 2025 operating budget as presented, and do not have any final direction to staff part of the budget being presented for adoption at the April 22, 2025 regular Council meeting subsequently included in the 2025 to 2029 five-year financial plan bylaw.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Yes, no questions, comments? Pretty straightforward, folks. I will then call the question. Thank you for your hard work on that. I know it seems like a nonstarter to not have any questions or comments, but that's because you've done such a good job. So I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is carried. Councilor Deck, did you have your hand up for an aye, or was that a question?
That's an aye.
Thank you so much, sir. All right then. So next we've got 8.2, which is proposed fees and charges update. I will turn this over to staff. If there's anything they would like to add to the report.
Thank you, Mayor Colborne. I would just like to add, I'd really like to thank Deputy Janice and Finance Manager Claudia Frost on all of the work they did towards this. It was a major undertaking to review like-size communities, look at what what fees and charges we were actually using versus which ones had sort of become non-needed, and put forward, I believe, a sustainable fees and charges bylaw.
Thank you for that. And is there anything else that staff wanted to add or highlight?
For the fees and charges?
Yep. Or alternative thing, if there is, oh, Deputy Janice?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything further to highlight, but happy to answer any questions that Council has.
Go through to Council.
Mayor Colborne, I think we're at a meeting the other day that we're just talking about to increase the revenue required for the garbage services, and how we would pick up some of that additional revenue. Is this a good time to talk about maybe tacking it on it? Some of these before we proceed with it?
That, this is where the utility fees would go, absolutely. So we had made a resolution that we would do a 4% increase to water, sewer, and garbage for 2025, and then six, and then 5% going forward after that, when we talked about the solid waste fees. So that's on the back of page 14.
Right. But were we aware at the time that there's going to be an increase for everything because of, yeah? Okay, because that's tacking on to the parking passes, where the visitor docking fees or something like that? For the tourist part of the revenue.
So what Councilor Copeland is talking about is that we had a community-to-community meeting regarding the solid waste function. The Comox Strathcona Waste Management came in and put on a presentation. Deputy Finance, Deputy CEO Janice was there, Councilor Copeland and myself were there. During those discussions, there was talk about, as we know, we're going to go to a tipping fee process. Right now, what happens in our solid waste function is that we pay for tipping fees for getting it in there. We are also going to start having an added fee for disposal, because the process will work that it goes into a tipping transportation. Thank you for that. And then we'll be shipped down to Campbell River. There was discussions about using Mount Waddington. I think, though, before we make any changes, we should wait for that report to come back, because they will sustain, they will, they will put that all into a report with some what we heard, what the, what possibly some of the costs might be. We just don't know what those will be yet, so there will be an opportunity to amend this at any time. We can amend our bylaws as those things change and as we know more. But to do that, I think it may be putting the, the part report, yeah, yeah, because we're just not sure what that looks like right now. It all depends on service levels that we have with their surrounding nations, so Fair Harbor, KCFN, New Chalit, Hattis. And so I think they'll come back with a report. I think they said within the first 30 days, and then we can have a better look at that with more information.
Thank you.
Councilor Janice?
You just put 25% on everything. Isn't that the way to go these days?
Just add 25% all the way across the board to everything they've asked?
I think here, I think that we wait until we get more information. You know, it's still a little ways away too, right? So I don't know when or how we can start that, but it's definitely going to be an adjustment to everybody's system. And, you know, we've been talking about some very small increases lately, and this one's going to be an eye opener, I think, for everybody this fall, so anyways.
There was some discussion at that meeting, also catchmenting someone like the lodges. What Councilwoman Copeland, I think, was talking about was catchmenting some of the people from the lodges on the outside, people at the wharf that are adding to our waste stream by adding some extra own park in. Maybe that's a way to get those, the revenue back from that, because then it's not a taxpayer's fee, and the taxpayers were paying for it. There's a lot of conversation at that meeting. It was, when did we go from nine till two or something like that, 2:45? Yeah, so we'll get that report back, and then we'll be able to comment on it and go through what, what information they can provide. Anything else on the report? This is extremely comprehensive, and I wanted to, when I was in talking to you, Deputy Janice, on Monday, or whenever that was, because all the days run together, were you saying that you have to provide justification? I can't remember what you said about that. Can you remember what you said about, do you have to justify each line item or something to the public before? Can you remember what we said, what you said?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So as per legislation, we're required to make available to the public justification for each cost increase within the fees and charges bylaw.
Thank you for that. I thought that was an interesting tidbit, but I couldn't remember how she worded it, because these are all very incremental, and they haven't been touched, and some of these are actually new, because they're new services that we've never provided before. So this is a really comprehensive list. I'm very appreciative of you looking to other communities and seeing what they have, and then also knowing what we require here. So it's not overdone, but it covers off the basics. So if there's no comments or questions, or anything that anybody wants to amend on this, then the recommendation is on page 14. So we would. So that Council has reviewed the proposed fees and charges increases, have provided feedback regarding those three things. So I can make that if you'd like. So that Council recommends to our regular meeting that we have reviewed the proposed fees and charges increases, that we have provided feedback regarding the appropriateness of the increases, the implementation of automatic 5% for the utilities from 26 to 28, and specifics. Oh, and that's not, that's a moot point, number three. Only that we would reconsider as things change. So Council, oh, Councilor Lewis, Councilor Deck?
Yes. If they have to, I admire every line to justify it to the public. I would assume we'll have to notify the CAO and the Deputy CAO. There'll be no more time off, and you'll have to work longer hours. Thank you.
I don't know if that's a fee or a charge, but we'll ask staff to clarify that. Thank you. Anything that anybody else wanted to say about that? This is a lot of work, and it's been a long time coming, folks. We haven't looked at this in quite a while. Yeah, I know. I mean, for this table as well, to consider all of these, and for the staff time that it took to add and redo all of these, we very much appreciate it. It takes into account our new parking bylaw. It takes into account our utilities bylaw. It takes into, like, there's a lot of things in here, so thank you for making it so comprehensive and easy to read. Nothing else from anybody? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That then is carried. Um, did you need anything else from us? Did that get where you wanted to get for the April 22, or April? 22nd meeting, Deputy Janice?
Thank you, Mayor Colborne. No, I think that's everything that we need. Thank you.
Perfect. All right, so we're going to move on to item number 10, New Business, and that is a the business is Forestry Campsite Access. I will turn that over to Councilor Lewis to bring it up.
Having been down to both the campsite resolution and Little Espinoza, I'm hoping that we could put a letter maybe to Forestry to ask about brushing, seeing as how they are getting the roads brushed right now, and the possibility of anything being done with the dock.
Resolution. Resolution across the bridge in Little E S. Little, yeah, okay. Questions and comments from Council?
So it was good. I think it was a good idea.
Tour season?
Things do need to be kept, like everything around here, so.
Who's in charge of the dock?
That's a forestry campsite, so that would be Ministry of Forests.
That's a good approach for the dock.
And just some history. So in my time here, which is a long time, but in my recent time here, that dock has been redone multiple times. I can think of three instances where that dock has been repaired. However, with the flows of the tides, with the King Tides in January, with the way that the weather comes down that inlet, they've done a couple of different instances and tried to fix that a few times. I don't know how much dock movement will get on that, but I do absolutely know that it needs to be brushed the whole way down there. I have a little, not a very wide vehicle, and it scrapes, like, it needs to be, you know, it needs to be looked at at least. Lily isn't quite so bad, but I think it's used more actually, Little Espinoza, but yeah, it could use some brushing and upkeep. They, they need, they're responsible for those sites, so a little push in the right direction might be nice.
Picnic tables would be nice, too.
Right? Some picnic tables, right? So, did you want to take the lead on that and come in? What's your suggestion going forward? If we were to write a letter to Ministry of Forests about the upkeep of the road, the campsite itself, the dock, and the availability of amenities, what would?
That staff, that Council made that recommendation tonight, that staff draft a letter for approval at the 22nd meeting to go to Ministry of Forests with the requested items.
So moved. So that was that staff do a draft letter to Forestry regarding brushing. Let's just put access and upkeep, yeah, because then that, yeah, that kind of encompasses it all. Thank you for that, yeah. So you moved that? Oh, second, okay, Councilor Janice? And is that enough with that? For you?
Yes, absolutely.
Perfect. Is there anybody we would want to see on it? Perfect, is there anybody we would want to see on it? All right, let's just ask. Perfect. All right, anything else to be included in that? All the question, all in favor? Any opposed? That is carried, we have no interior, public isn't here, we give no rise, I'm looking for item 14.
Motion to adjourn.
Questions, comments, conversation, all in favor? Any opposed? Not carried.